Call the November 21st, 2024 meeting of the Reno County Planning Commission to order. Staff, will you please call the roll?
Shortfayer?
Here.
Fran?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Here.
Mattlin?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Gertson?
Here. Welcome, everyone. Beautiful fall day. I trust that you've had a chance to review your packets. In those packets were minutes from the Thursday, October 17th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Staff, or excuse me, Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move for reckless approval of minutes, but I also like to suggest an addition to that. This document of the minutes referred to the blue area several times, and I think the minutes should have attached a copy of the blue area drawing. I'd clear that Don just give us an updated due one, but these minutes need to be complete and show a picture of what's the blue area. With that, I approve for approval.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Staff, you understand to add that map?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'll get that added to the signed minutes.
Okay, fantastic. So we'll call all in favor of approval of the October 17 minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. The Kansas Supreme Court has defined a rezone or conditional use permit public hearing as a quasi judicial function to ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the Planning Commission in an orderly manner. The Planning Commission will follow the fact finding procedure, which is outlined on the handout in its chair. Your attention to this procedure will be appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, that recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the Planning Commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written requests for additional public comment or documents based only on valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based upon new information which has become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this county commission policy, the public hearing is considered incomplete only if the Planning Commission failed to follow its procedural guidelines, which resulted in a denial of due process to a party of interest, or if the Planning Commission failed to allow an interested party an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of the county commission policy, new information shall pertain only to germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing, or which was unknown, or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study completed after the Planning Commission recommendation. The Planning Commission recommendation to the county commissioners will be accompanied by a summary of proceedings before the Planning Commission at its public hearing, along with the report and recommendation of the county planner, letters, informal petitions, and other information constituting the record of proceedings provided to the Planning Commission before and during the public hearing. If the Planning Commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case will be presented to the county commissioners at their next available meeting after a protest period expires. Contact planning staff or visit the website for county commissioner agenda items. Any party who wishes to require the county commissioners decide this case by super majority vote may file a protest petition pursuant to KSA 12-757 at the office of the Reno County Clerk, 125 West First Avenue, Hutchinson, Kansas, within 14 days following the decision by the Planning Commission. The form is on the Reno County website, Planning Department webpage. I'll now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2024-14. A request by the Larry and Beverly Fraze Family Trust and the Ray and Dawn Fraze Family Trust of the applicant Art Valley Electric Cooperative Association for a conditional use permit to establish a limited scale commercial solar energy system on land zoned ag agricultural district. The property is approximately 7.89 acres of land located on the south side of East 95th Street, 95th Avenue, approximately 2,000 feet west of North Halsted Street. Have any of the Planning Commission members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
Do any of the Planning Commission members have conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Well, applicant, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the chair. Planning Commission members may request clarification at the end of your presentation or may have questions.
I'm Jackie Holberg, the general manager of Art Valley Electric Cooperative located at Penny's 10th South Hutchinson. I appreciate all the work that the commission has done to develop the regulations for the limited scale commercial solar energy system, and appreciate the opportunity for you today for this presentation. Art Valley is a not-for-profit electric distribution cooperative. We provide service to 3,200 members and 5,200 meters. We are governed by a seven-member board, and our members are our owners. We operate using the cooperative business model where we assign margins at the end of every year back to the members based on their usage. So all the margins are returned on an individual basis. For an example, this year in December, we're going to be retiring $1.2 million in general retirement to our members, including this retirement. And since 2011, we've returned $16 million to our members. Art Valley purchases all of our power from Kansas Electric Power Cooperative. They procure energy contracts for the 16-member co-ops that are part of that. And they are also a not-for-profit generation and transmission company. They allow us to purchase energy from renewables from just 1 megawatt for our own members on our substations. There are 12 co-ops that have worked together to form a contract with Today's Power. They're a subsidiary of Arkansas Electric Cooperative. They install, own, and operate the solar system that we are asking for today. Each system is contracted for a 25-year purchase power agreement with the option to have additional five-year extensions. All systems are limited by that 1 megawatt, and we're responsible to purchase all of the energy that it produces, and it will be utilized by our members. The solar installation that we're requesting, like you had mentioned, is located on 95th Street, just a half mile west of Halsted Street. It will sit on less than 8 acres. It will have 3,550 solar panels. At their maximum height will be 8 feet, and it will be surrounded by a chain link fence with barbed wire that is 8 feet tall. It's on a single-axis tracking system to get the most production out of it, and it is designed to generate power when our rates are the most expensive, which is in the summer from 3 to 6 to help with peak demand. The energy that's produced by this solar system would supply 959 meters on that substation, and 589 of those are Reno County meters. The purchase power agreement with Today's Power will provide savings on our wholesale costs by reducing that peak demand. We do have a solar system in the unzoned portion of Reno County on Langdon Road, and it's been installed for three years now, and the average savings has been $135,000 annually. As I mentioned, because we are cooperative, the margins will be returned to our members, and all the savings from that solar installation will go back to them. So that's why we're requesting that conditional use permit for that limited scale solar today. So I'll take any questions that you may have now.
I might add that I had any questions in my mind. You answered them all in your presentation. Thank you.
As well. We approved another site up on 108th Street.
Correct.
And this is just an addition to that? I mean, you're just building into your infrastructure? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, we actually didn't build that one that had been approved previously because we would need to transfer some load to take on all that it could generate. So we want to reduce that size because we are limited by our contract on how much we can install. So that'll be a smaller solar array, and we would have to install that ourselves. But this substation just makes more sense. We wouldn't have to transfer load to take on what it could produce year-round, so.
Also something interesting, I don't think it was in the other application that you're going to use livestock to control the vegetation. Tell us a little bit about that.
Well, Today's Power said that's an option.
Okay.
I don't know that they'll be doing that, but that is some information that they provided that they could do that.
Okay.
I liked it from Bob Grace. I had one question about that subject. Is there, if they choose to do that, is there a structure that's required? A barn for the sheep or some kind of shelter?
No. I imagine that they would just be rotating them in and out, I mean, as they would need to, but no, there wouldn't be any additional structure. Because they would have to have water, which we don't have water there.
Where is this? It says it's close to a substation. Where is that substation at?
It's on Plum Street.
Okay.
82nd and Plum.
Okay, okay. I know where it is now.
So are there still plans to have a smaller installation with the previously approved site? Or is this, okay, so this is like an addition instead of a replacement?
Refresh your memories. Talk about 1 megawatt. Is that the maximum size you can? There's something about the amount that you could produce and purchase from renewables as opposed to your standard purchasing.
Our wholesale power contract that KEPCO has with Evergi, it limits what we can install at one particular substation, and that size is 1 megawatt.
Okay. I knew there was something there, I just didn't know what that was. Any other questions for the applicant?
All right, since this isn't directly located right next to the substation, is there going to be any kind of additional transmission lines built as a part of this project? Or is it just tapping into what's?
It will just tap into the line that's there.
Whatever's on 95th. Okay.
Any other questions? Not fully hearing right now, but we'll hear from the planning staff.
Mark, I'm actually a county planner, and so to help orient the board, we're at 95th and Halsted, so we're in the northern part of the county. Halsted is running north-south on the right side of the map, and 95th is the east-west road. And like I said, we're about 2,000 feet west of that intersection on the south side. Currently, what you see, the parcel is zoned agriculture, and I want to kind of clarify a little bit. What you see highlighted in purple with the number 4, that is not a current parcel. That is a legal description that Art Valley is proposing to purchase from the current owner. And so the way our regulations were written, we had to notify within 1,000 feet around a property if it was going to be leased. This property is not going to be leased. It will be purchased by Art Valley sold us. We did the 1,000-foot notification around the proposed purchased area. If it had been leased, then our notification area would have been around the entire parcel that you see on there, which is several hundred acres. And so I just want to kind of clarify that for the board. That's why you're seeing that we notified about six property owners versus everybody within like the half a mile, okay? And that's in our latest regulations that we have under Article 25. So as you heard, this is a proposal for a limited scale solar energy system. It's going to produce 1 megawatt of power. The power again is for the Art Valley customers only. It will not be transferred or sold on the open market. The owner of this is proposing an 8-foot fence will be installed around the perimeter, and they're proposing to have native seeds planted underneath the solar panels to help with erosion control after the project is completed. If it's approved, they're looking at about a six-week construction phase, and then after that, the site will mainly be monitored remotely with potentially, you know, one person driving a regular passenger car once or twice a month just to kind of check on things. But after the construction is completed, then there should be no real additional traffic to help, you know, with that project at all. It'll just be all monitored remotely and one person checking on it. After the 25 years, the project could be, could be, you know, taken down and then the land returned to a viable use. And so I guess they'll have to. They can also repurpose the panels, change them out, because the conditional use permit will go with that parcel of land for however long they want, but in their write-up, they said it's a 25-year type of project. The next part of my report really discusses the related requirements, and you can see there were a lot. I took our existing zoning regulations where it was applicable for any type of conditional use permit, but I also incorporated a lot of the regulations into our Article 25, which is for our limited scale solar. And so I'll go over a lot of them, not every single one, but certainly if this board asks questions, please let me know. The main one, of course, is the setbacks. The solar panels need to meet the following setbacks, and we're looking at 100-foot from the road right-of-way and any non-participating landowner's property line. Again, the large parcel there is a participating property owner, so it does not have to meet that setback. The nearest non-participating property owner would be to the west, properties, you know, 5 and 6, but also to the north across the road. This is a survey you see here. You've got a 40-foot right-of-way, which is the top dotted line, and these maps are in your packet. So the second dash line shows the 100-foot setback line from the road right-of-way. It's not from the center of the road, it was from the road right-of-way. The nearest house is under property number 6, and that was measured out to be about 732 feet. It's required to be a minimum of 500 feet from a non-resident landowner's principal building. It also requires a 25-foot setback from a fence associated with the energy project. And along that line, they are not proposing any kind of buildings or any kind of battery storage for this type of facility, so. Second map you see here, which is also a requirement of our regulation, shows the local concrete lines. When I looked at it here, it looked like in the northeast corner, we had an elevation of 1,541.5, and then the high was in the southwest corner, which is at 1,548.5. So about seven foot, seven foot change in elevation for that parcel here. So when I reviewed all this, the parcel and the project does comply with our setback requirements. Regarding the height, regulations require a maximum of 15-foot height. Can't exceed that. The owner is proposing to have an 8-foot height for all the solar panels. Again, on fencing, they're looking at an 8-foot-high fence, 6-foot fence with barbed wire on top, so that'd be a total height of 8-foot. So that complies with our regulations as well. The application says there are not going to be any lights. They're going to be installed for this project. And of course, again, no battery storage is going to be associated with this project, so that's not something we have to worry about with this type of project. As far as noise goes, regulations are requiring 60 decibels measured from the landowner's principal building, and the applicant indicates in their write-up that they're going to comply with that requirement there. The regulations also require them to discuss a construction timeline for this board and for everybody's information, and the write-up indicates that around the first part of March of next year, if this project is approved, that they would begin construction on that project. About a six-week timeline for that. If approved, they would go ahead and go forward with developing full engineering plans, which would include environmental assessment. Our regulations talk about having plans for soil erosion and sediment control. They're not willing to do that until they have an okay for the project, but part of my conditions that you see were they have to submit those plans to me and also comply with whatever requirements are for the engineer. You'll see on another drawing, they're looking at constructing an 8-foot by 8-foot pad for their transformer to sit on the property. That's indicated by this map right here, the little box on the west side. It's a little bit hard to see, but you do have a copy of that, so that would be the transformer pad showing the location of that. Next part of the report will discuss all of the factors that we use to review conditional use permit cases. I will not maybe go over them, but I would certainly stand if you have any questions on that write-up here. I used to have some other slides here as required by our regulations. They have provided us a conceptual drawing of what the panels will look like on the parcel. Again, this would be conceptual, you know, because this drawing does not appear to maybe meet our setback requirements, but again, when they go to develop the project, they will have to comply with those setback requirements. But this is again, it would be a conceptual drawing of how the panels would be oriented and what they would look like on the property. Another requirement of our regulations is for them to provide us a map showing another approved project. The regulations require that a minimum of two miles between limited scale projects has to be maintained. Arrow on the right will show the project that was approved several years ago, 2021 maybe, that Chairman Gertson mentioned. That's at 108th and Sunrise. And then the arrow on the left is the 95th and Halsted project that we are considering tonight, and there's about four miles separation between those two projects, so that does comply with our regulations. So our aerial photographs of the area, if you have not driven by or know the area too well, the entire parcel is highlighted in blue. The blue arrow kind of gives you the approximate location of their project. See, it's a large farm parcel there. The farmhouse is located to the south and east a little bit there. To the west is where you have the residential development. On the north side of 95th Avenue is another large farm parcel, so there's no house right across the street from there. This is a little bit closer up. You can kind of see the houses. The nearest house for the project would be located right there, and that's the one that I determined is about 730 feet roughly from the property boundary. And then there are other houses further to the west. Just be looking at pretty much the same area, but looking to the south a little bit. So you can see the project area is on the west side. On this map, it's on the right, but you can see a large area of trees that would help kind of shield that from the houses that are to the west. And then you can see that there's another tree row further to the south on the owner's property. This is a picture looking south at the project site, again, showing that tree battery on the west side. And then this would be a picture of the land that is directly across the street from where I took the other picture. You can see it's far brown. That concludes all the pictures that I have. So staff recommends approval of the request. It's based off of the 10 factors and discussion that you see listed in the staff report, and I have recommended five conditions of approval. The first one is that the property shall be developed according to the submitted site plan dated November 6th and Article 25 of our zoning regulations. Number two is that prior to construction, the applicant shall submit a copy of the environmental assessment report and the final engineering plans, which addresses the issues related to soil erosion and sediment control and so on. The third one is the owner shall receive an approved agricultural lot split prior to construction of the project. That is something that is done administratively by me. It's not something that this board does as a review. So the area you see highlighted in purple is about a 7.9-acre parcel. In order to legally split that off, according to our subdivision regulations, that is going to take what we call an agricultural lot split. Again, that is reviewed administratively by me and not part of this board's review process. The fourth one is that the applicant shall meet any and all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. And then the last one is the one that gives the county the right to rescind the conditional use permit if the regulations are not being followed by the owners of the property. We sent letters to the six property owners that you see listed on the screen right there. At the time, we did not receive any kind of written comments. However, one comment did come in just this morning recommending, you know, in favor of the project and supports it, and that comment is on your desk right there. So with that, I would stand for any kind of questions.
Mark, this is, the lot split is over the seven-acre limit that we normally see. Can you talk through that just a little bit?
Yes, yeah, it is. So the seven-acre limit is for house construction and not necessarily applicable to a non-residential type of construction, so that's something that we could approve. Could potentially be an issue, you know, in the future, you know, like if this project doesn't get built and somebody wants to buy that and construct a house on that. But staff would have to work through something like that, you know, at that time. But yeah, so when you do a split like that, you know, we can approve a split of greater than that, even though, yeah, we have a seven-acre maximum that you're alluding to. Maybe something similar is if somebody wanted to split off, say, 20 acres. Okay, well, they can split off 20 acres and add that to their existing parcel, you know, as an additional farm parcel, if you will. It's just that, yeah, you would not be able to build on that, and they would have to understand that, so. But this is something we're talking about 25 years from now potentially, so who knows what the regulations would be? And of course, we're looking at, you know, some adjustments on our regulations with that, but yeah.
Appreciate that clarification. I just wanted to make sure we got that.
That applies to, short answer, that applies to residential houses.
Any other questions for staff? If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case, you have five minutes to comment. Please come forward to the podium one at a time and state your name and address for the record before commenting. Audience members are only permitted one time to the podium. In the interest of time, if you agree with the comments previously made by audience members, please don't repeat the comments. Please just simply state that you agree with the previous and then present new information to the Planning Commission. Statements and questions should only be directed to the Planning Commission, not to applicant or staff. The Planning Commission may choose not answer questions or engage with the public. Questions regarding the application can be asked to the Planning Commission and answered by the applicant during the rebuttal phase of this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment? State your name and address, please.
My name's David Bauer, and I have interest in the property at 1712 East 95th, which is the R1, labeled number 1, as well as ag land that's labeled number 2. Oh, comment-wise, the only thing I want to say that, no opposition to it. Seems like a good use for the land as it's poor ag land, poor pasture. Seems like it would be a good add to the county's tax base and all around a good use. The only comment I'd have partially negative is hearing the 8-foot fence with barbed wire on the top and the potential for 25 years of use. Is, and this is more of a question, I guess, is there any bond that's set forth at the beginning that upon decommissioning for the remediation of the land? Or is it just a word of mouth that we will remediate back to original if it's decommissioned? And then all my other questions were really for Art Valley, so I don't know if that'd be appropriate to address to you for the rebuttal phase?
Address to us, and then they can.
So since the 1-megawatt limit with the purchase agreement with KEPCO was per the substation, for the other residential landowners, there's per the substation, for the other residential landowners, there's currently a tariff on Ark Valley that allows for residential solar generation. And since they're going up to the one-megawatt limit, would that preclude anybody else that's on that line segment, since they're tying into the distribution link using the substation over 82nd and Plum? Would that preclude any other residences from generating solar and selling back to Ark Valley? So it's not a negative, just a comment or a question, and otherwise it would be all positive. Thank you.
What was your question about the barbed wire?
If there was a bond that's being placed for remediation, I know on several large-scale projects where they're doing industrial scale, there's usually a bond that's created at the beginning to pay for the remediation of the ground. It's like such for like a mine when you're digging a mine. If there's...
So you didn't really have a problem with the barbed wire? It was just what happens at the end of it?
It's not my favorite, but I understand for liability and security reasons why it needs to be there. So, I mean, it doesn't really fit in with the ag environment, but I've seen it at all the other small-scale solar installations and understand that it's needed for security and for viability reasons. So, and I guess with that, I just like that glad to hear that they're considering mob grazing, so the ground will still be used for someone to ag use. So that would be, that would be a plus to see it grazed instead of industrial mowing going on out there to keep it under control. But, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Care to have any comments? We have two minutes and additional time may be allotted.
Yeah, we happen to respond. As far as decommissioning, we have that in the contract with TPI, or today's power. So the structures aren't, they're very manageable. We have line crews that pull holes all the time. So if for some reason they defaulted on decommissioning, I mean, our co-op could handle that very easily. And then as far as our member solar, it would not affect any members from installing solar. There's limits on them to help protect the co-op for any issues like that. So this would not limit any of their installations.
I have a question for you. Is TPI the same company that did the Langdon Road install?
Yes, yes, it is. Anyone?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Does staff wish to rebut any statements?
To address the comment, I would inform the gentleman here that, yeah, the regulations do address decommissioning. Now, there's no bond that's required to be submitted, but we do have regulations in place that should, should the project cease to be producing power, then the applicant would have to follow those decommissioning guidelines and return the land to, you know, agriculture use or some other viable type of land use. There's no bond that's required to be submitted, so we don't have to try and maintain that, you know, over a lengthy period of time. But there are rules in place to cover that.
Does this commission have any further questions for applicant or staff? The public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of rezone or conditional use permit must be based on the factors that are listed in the staff report found in the audience chairs. This is the time planning commission can discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Any discussion, any questions?
I'll just make the comment that I appreciate their site selection. It seems like a great use of land and with hardly any commotion in the neighborhood, so... Thank you.
Any other comments? Not chair will entertain a motion on this case.
Mr. Chairman. I move that case number 2024-14, the request by the Larry and Beverly Fraz family trust and the Ray and Dawn Fraz family trust, applicant Ark Valley Electric Cooperative Association Incorporated, requesting a conditional use permit from the Reno County zoning regulations to establish a one-megawatt AC, single-axis tracking, limited-scale commercial solar energy system on a portion of a parcel of land zoned ag, agricultural land district, be approved based on the 10 factors and five conditions listed in the staff report and is heard at this public hearing.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Staff, please call the roll. Shortfiring?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
We look forward to seeing solar panels on 95th Street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be on to our next item of business. Case 2023-10. This is a continuation of discussion on Article 26 of the Reno County zoning regulations to regulate commercial solar energy systems. Last month, we reviewed just briefly the draft document that staff put together for us. I think today would be a, I think we're going to start, we'll start reviewing what he has presented to us. Some of this will be familiar from when we discussed the limited scale. Some of it is new just because it pertains to the commercial side of, side of the regulation. You'll also see in your packet samples from Sedgwick County and also Douglas County and what their regulations look like. Hope you've had a chance to review those. They were, they were an interesting read. Staff, do you have any comments before we get started in this process?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So what you had in your packet from last month was where we left off at the end of 2023 with the commercial solar regulations before we were told to pause that. And so it was pretty rough, rough, you know, draft that you had at that time, because now we've adopted limited-scale regulations. And so there's a lot of things I need to kind of correct with that, but I want to get that to the board so you can see where we had stopped. You know, so there's some corrections that need to be made. And I thought maybe I would just start out with some of those here to maybe kind of avoid having to, you know, tell me all the corrections. One of the main ones is like on the page numbers, you know, we're going to have to now adopt an Article 26 because Article 25 is devoted to limited scale, and this is going to be for full commercials. So it's obvious that I need to change the page numbers. But there's also several mentionings of articles within that document that talks about Article 25. And so I've gone through the document, and I've highlighted all those changes that need to be made. So I don't know if we need to go back and reference those. When we have future drafts of these regulations, that'll be corrected and provided to the board's ears. So, because, yeah, there's several instances where I talk about complying with Article 25 and abide by this article, and it should be Article 26 right now. But looking at, there's some other changes, I think, that probably need to be made. And I'd say the biggest one is toward the back when we talk about a developer's agreement. If you recall, when we were developing the limited scale, there was a lot of discussion on what needs to be included in a developer's agreement and lots of discussion. And I think where we landed on with staff's recommendation is that this board doesn't have any control nor should it really have much of a say in what goes into a developer's agreement. I think we could certainly have some guidelines as a separate document, but not embedded within our zoning regulations. And so we did that with the limited scale. We took out everything in the decommissioning and the developer's agreement in that area and really honed it down. And so this document that you see here still has the original developer's agreement and all the talk about the decommissioning and the bonds and the road maintenance plan and all that. And so staff would be recommending to this board again that we follow what we did with the limited scale and almost essentially strike that whole section there. But still mention in our regulations that the developer of a commercial solar energy system would have to enter into a developer's agreement with the county. But it's nothing that this board really needs to be probably concerned about at that point.
So you're referencing paragraph 26-110? Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, toward the back of the document, yeah. All of that would need to be, you know, struck, except for the fact that we want to mention that obviously a commercial solar developer needs to enter into a developer's agreement with the county. So that would shrink that document, I think, significantly here once we take that out.
Mark, what does that look like from a developer's perspective? Knowing that, I mean, if I'm going to go through the work of trying to prepare for this project, and I know I need a developer's agreement, but it's, if we take this out, it feels like that would just be open-ended and I, as a developer, I wouldn't know, well, what, what are you going to spring on me in that developer's agreement?
I agree with you, Garth, that, you know, I think, you know, I'm not a big fan of dumping a whole bunch of stuff in a developer's agreement in the first place. I think we need to provide guidance as to what the county wants in the way regulations regarding, in this case, a commercial solar system. And not just basically say, well, we'll let the county commission take care of it and not give them any guidance or anything else. And that could change from commission to commission because they change over time. History's going to change over time. Whereas if we have something in the regulations, you know, that's there. It's going to continue until the actual regulations get changed. And it provides guidance to both the county commission and to any developers as to what's being expected of them as far as compliance in developing a project.
I think that when it comes to time to create a development agreement, which is, would be between the Board of County Commissioners and staff would probably be involved, I think the suggestions from the Planning and Zoning Commission given to staff, given to them, would be welcome. And I think that's the way it should be, that I don't think any suggestions should be a part of regulations. I think that's the difference. I think exactly what you said is true.
I understand what you're saying, Don. What I'm, I guess what I'm saying is I think this, more of this should be in the regulations than in the form of, you know, this should be on a list for the development agreement. Because it's, you know, if...
But the Board of County Commissioners...
If you don't provide, you know, something in the regulations as to what is being expected. And if we don't reference what we would like to see in a development agreement in some form or fashion, then, you know, as time passes and commissions change, who knows? You know, the information could get lost. You know, and suddenly you've got, somebody comes in and wants to do a solar system and, oh, what do we need in a development agreement? The county commission has no clue. You know, I'm saying that's going to happen, but it's possible. You know? And you're, I mean, basically, you're putting a lot more work on them by putting, you know, saying, well, you've got to negotiate a development agreement for this project. I think most of them are pretty busy as it is. I don't know if they really want that extra work.
That's their job.
That's their job, I know, I know.
I mean, the, I mean, I'm not disagreeing. The development agreement is created by the Board of County Commissioners and the developer, not the Planning and Zoning Commission. Not to say that the planning, not to say that they shouldn't welcome suggestions from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think they would, and I think that you should, but I don't agree that that's a part of the regulations. But what you, but, but yes, they need, they would need support from here and, and, you know, some suggestions, but that's separate than the regulations.
So where would they go if not in this document?
You would, at the time when one would be done, then I would think that this commission, if anybody on this commission would want suggestions for them to consider, they would give them to staff and staff would give them to the Board of County Commissioners. Because they're not a regulation, and you create regulations.
I guess what you're also saying is there must be a development in the wind when all this starts.
Sure, sure.
Rather than trying to speculate on what developments might happen and come up with some guidelines for that, you just have, wait till a development is seen in our sights, then we put our heads together and do our best job.
But in that respect, Harley, I think that the regulations should provide certain safeguards to landowners and taxpayers of Reno County in the event of a, you know, a wind farm being developed. We know that they're going to, they're going to have regulated certain areas that say, okay, you know, here's, here's the things they have to comply with to protect your property rights.
Could you give me an example so I can see?
Setbacks, you know, fencing, all kinds of stuff.
Those things are probably already covered, aren't they? Things like...
Those are in the regulations.
I mean, like in the document, you know, original document on, you know, it talks about the decommissioning agreement and what things we're going to look for in a decommissioning agreement. It talks about a road maintenance plan. You know, and those are the types of things that would be in a developer's agreement. Some of the other things were a dispute plan. You know, we had talked about a dispute mitigation plan with wind, and that was carried over to the solar proposal, a fire safety and rescue plan, all these plans. How are they going to address certain things like, yeah, setbacks and heights and all that? That's all regulation.
And that you're creating and that they have to abide by. This is, the development agreement is issues beyond the regulations.
Yes, I understand that. Let me ask you a question then, Mark. Like in 26-110, okay, you said the following subject matters may be addressed at discretion of the county commission in development agreement or a series of development agreements. And one, then you start out with road maintenance repair replacement. Number two is decommissioning agreement. Three is indemnification agreement. And then you go on down the list on that stuff. So basically, there would be no regulations relating to decommissioning. Is that correct?
It would be similar to what we have in the limited scale right now. It says that they have to, they have to provide a decommissioning agreement, yeah.
They have to agree with, okay, but in this case of a commercial solar system, it's much larger than, you know, seven acre, eight acre tract of land. And you look in the other counties that, rigs that we've looked at, that you gave us, Douglas and Sedgwick, I think both of them require, you know, either an escrow or certi bond agreements that are part of their regulations for, you know, having those funds available to return that land to use to make sure that, you know, because it's, this is, if you're like, I mean, we don't, right now, we have no limitation on the size of this agreement of a solar farm. So we're putting in 1,000 acres, 1,500 acres, something like this, you know, for Reno County. They can invest 5,000 acres if they want to.
Yep, right now.
Right now. There was no, nothing that says how small. So you've got a 5,000-acre solar farm in Reno County, and there's no, nothing in there requiring them to put up a bond or something for decommissioning. And, you know, you're taking it with their word that, you know, at the end of the project in 25, 30 years, that they're going to take care of it.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting that the other documents I provide you, yeah, they do mention, mention that, you know, and listen to this board and listen to Don. And, yeah, I tend to side with, I think, you know, him in the sense that, yeah, that is not a regulation. I think it could be, and it is. It is with a lot of... It could be. And it is. It is with a lot of them. But I think, I think it's, it's overstepping the planning commission now. Like, your job would be land use, and your job would be to have a condition of approval that says that you are going to enter into a developer's agreement with the county because-
Well, this is part of the land use because, you know, it's the exploration of their-
And then it was stop.
Then they got to return the land to assume the land use.
And then that would carry over into that developer's agreement and said, you're going to provide us a-
Well, that's, you know, the county commission's negotiation and whether or not they want to require a surty bond or escrow or anything else instead of making a requirement of the project.
And I'm not saying, I, we don't take all of this in here and just flush it and not ever use it. I think it could be put in, if you will, like, a policy or, you know, a resolution of the planning commission that this is what we're going to look for. And then the county commissioners can use that as a guide. But to embed it in, into the regulations, yeah, I-
I think parts of it you could probably leave in a development agreement. Parts of it I think I would rather see in the regulations, you know.
And I'm, well, I'm still struggling with my original question. As a developer, when are you going to tell me about this development agreement? And what I, what am I going to expect to have to put into my planning? How much is that going to cost? Can we comply? Do I wait until close to the end when the, the land use, the CPU's been approved? Or do I enter into that at the beginning?
Well, there's no development agreement needed until the project is approved. So I would think as soon as the project's approved, then there's going to be set up meetings with the Board of County Commissioners for a development agreement. Because if a development agreement isn't agreed on, there is no project. So I would think as soon as they know that they have a project approved, then the next step is the development agreement before anything starts.
Leave lots of gray area out there that may be in a development agreement. And the developer doesn't know what those requirements are going to be when they're trying to plan the development. It's, makes it a little hard for them to do a lot of some of their planning if they don't know what they need to plan for. You know, going back to what Garth's saying, you know, how do you, how do you go in to try to develop a project if you don't know what the rules are? At least some of the basic rules.
And then a similar conundrum I'm having is, okay, if we approve the land use, well, I may be, I may feel differently about the land use, given what is in the developer, development agreement. You know, if you're going to say, you can't do this, you must do this, then I'd be okay with using the land in that way. But if I don't know some of those details, I, I may not be okay with it.
You mean details on decommissioning or road or bridge details or something?
Whatever it might be.
Because their job is land use. Is it proper land use or not a proper land use?
Yeah. And so, okay, proper land use is for a commercial solar. But there's a lot of details behind that. If, let's just say, well, okay, nothing in the developer's agreement, I'm going to say, I don't think that's a proper land use.
Well, in the regulations, it says there needs to be a developer's agreement in the regulations that's coming from here. So there has to be a developer's agreement.
But I won't know even-
Now, how good it's going to be or bad it's going to be, that's the Board of County Commissioners.
Let me ask you another question, though. Then, in, in going through the conditional use permit process, is the, could the commission, conditional use permit be acted on by this board and be either approved or denied? Or if it's approved prior to the development of the development agreement? So when, basically, so when it was approved by this board, they would then go to the county commission and start in their development agreement. Is that correct? So-
It'd be presumptive, but they could certainly do that because they don't have their final approval. But, yeah, they could do that. And I don't, I mean, I think they do these with every project. And so I think they're pretty aware of what would be expected in a typical developer's agreement. But to try and answer your question-
They could be, they, they should be aware of what's expected. But if you don't tell them what's expected in Reno County, they're going to know. It may be expected to do this in Douglas County or Sedgwick County, but not necessarily Reno County. So if somebody doesn't bring it up and they don't want to do it, they're not going to go to bat and say, well, gee, don't you want us to do this? Try, try and answer your question. More regulation than, on some of these, some of these items than leaving them just in a, in a development agreement.
So to try and answer your question, Garth, you know, right now, it was written, they have 120 days to execute a developer's agreement after the effective date. And so the effective date would be when the resolution approving a project is published in the paper. So like tonight, your recommendation goes to the county commissioners. In probably a month, they're going to approve that and sign a resolution, for example, approving the project. Then I have to take that and I have to publish that in the paper. And then that is the effective date. So from that date, they have 120 days to be able to execute a developer's agreement. And I don't, I remember our discussion, I don't know if it made it in the right, but then, you know, if you're negotiating good faith, then that could probably be extended. So it may not be like necessarily a hard 120 days. But we put that in there just so, hey, if you're going to do a project, then let's get this going and let's get the developer's agreement signed. So that, that would start that negotiation process.
Can they do it beforehand?
Yeah, I suppose, sure. They could do that, you know, if they wanted to, and start having those conversations.
You know, to me, though, it's, you're putting a lot of the onus on the, on these solar projects on the county commission. You know, and, you know, the planning commission, we've, you know, spent the last two years studying this thing and talking about it, going over regulations and, you know, listening to testimony and everything else on the thing. You know, the county commission, I believe, I'm sure, listened to some of that. You know, they've not been privy to all of it. They're not as well-informed, I don't think, as this commission is on, you know, all aspects of a solar, you know, commercial solar system. And, you know, I think, I think we're in a better place to set forth what requirements should be in there in regulation to, you know, to aid both county commission in their decision and also to aid the developer so they know what they've got to do, you know, to complete, get their conditional use permit.
So, so if you put that into regulations, you're telling them that this has to be done?
And that's all they have to do?
No, not necessarily all.
No, I mean, if you have these separate subjects, like Steve is mentioning, in the regulations, you're telling the Board of County Commissioners, you will have this in a development agreement?
Well, the way-
Well, I'm not saying, I'm saying you have it in a regulation, not as a part of the development agreement.
So it's a regulation?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, Don. It's not, not, it's taking some of this stuff out of the development agreement, putting it in a regulation, like your decommissioning and stuff like that. You know. And, yeah, in some way, we can make a checklist of the stuff to provide the county commission for a development agreement, fine. Because I know there's, you know, it's a needed document. I'm not arguing that. But, you know, there's some of these things that I feel should not be a part of the development agreement, should be regulated instead. Personal preference.
So like 26-110 is written, it's, I mean, there's a lot of, at the discretion of either both parties or the county commission. So there really isn't a lot of teeth in this section, is there, as it's written?
No, I mean, it gives the Board of County Commissioners options to say, no, that's not applicable to this project.
Totally a disgrace.
So really, everything, it's kind of more of a suggestion section than a regulation.
But then that gets back to Don's original point that suggestions should not be in regulation. Regulations should be regulations. You have to do this or you shall do this. Not, well, we'd like for you to do this, but if you don't feel like it, then maybe we can waive that, you know. It should, and so that's where-
So if we have two pages, three pages of suggestions in our regulations, does that hurt the rest of our regulations? Just on a conceptual level?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, because it gives you, well, you know, if we don't want to do that, maybe we can get some other things, you know, waive. I mean, we have, we have, words in there where it says that you can't waive the requirements in here. But, but that went back to the original discussion where we did not want to dictate to the county commissioners what they should put in a, in a developer's agreement. So that's where we landed on suggestions. But then I think further thought and further research, well, why are we having all these suggestions in the regulations? The regulations should be, this is what you need to do to do a commercial solar land use.
You mentioned just briefly policy or-
Resolution.
Resolution. What does that look like? Just kind of spell that out. Maybe that helps us define.
Well, like next month, you know, we, every year, we will sign a planning commission resolution setting the dates and times of, of next year's meetings. And so, you know, and I haven't, I mean, I'm just talking off the top of my head, you know. It could be a policy or it could be a resolution saying, well, the planning commission has this document here, and these are our suggestions that should be included in a developer's agreement. I don't know if that's viable. I haven't discussed that with Don, you know.
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
So how, so if it's, if it's written like that, how does it get communicated to county commission? I mean, if they, if they choose not to read that policy, that's, that's all I get. I'm going to be kind of blunt. If they don't read that policy, they can, they got carte blanche. They can do, they can do what they want in a development.
Steve has expressed concern about a possible developer. How's the developer going to know that either, if the commission doesn't know it?
But if it's in a policy, written in our, I mean, it's going to be in our, in our, in our regulations at some point. And there's probably going to be a page in the back that says all the new policies and, and, yeah.
And the developer could get that.
Yeah. I don't want to bury it. I don't, that's, I don't want, I'm, I'm with these guys. I don't, I want it to be upfront. But I also don't believe that we need reg, need suggestions in our regulations also. I want to make sure we have, I would like to have my cake and eat it too.
I would think if-
Have this, have this in a document that can be found and can be readily accessed by all that needs to be.
I would think if a resolution was created for suggestions for a development agreement on, let's say, large-scale solar, as soon as a project, somebody came forth with a project or was thinking about a project, they could get that information. Because it's a part, it's a part of it.
They're going to be researching the regulations, though, wouldn't they? Not necessarily, you know, resolutions. Unless there's a reference to the resolution.
Well, it'll say in the, in the regulations to-
There'd be a reference.
A developer's agreement.
There'd be a reference in the, in the regulations to the resolution. Then you could do that for that, that, those items.
And there should be. There'd be a reference to it, and it's, it wouldn't be a part of the regulations. But there'd be a reference to-
The reference to page one of paragraph 85. I don't, I'm not spouting here, but whatever that is, then they could go find that.
And that would be given to them, you know, years before something would ever go to a public hearing. So they would have that, even before they even have a potential viable project.
So, I mean, some of those items that we're talking about in the development agreement, I could go along with putting in a resolution-type thing, as long as that resolution is referenced in the regulations, so the developer can follow the trail and find it. But I think there are some things in there that, that we haven't, right now, have in the development agreement that I really don't think belong in a development agreement, that I think should be part of the regulations.
What, what are those things?
Yeah, that's why we're still creating this, so we had discussions.
I mean, I, I guess that's, I guess we probably ought to make a list. What needs, what, what do you believe needs to be there?
I'm going to put you on the spot, aren't you?
I am going to put you on the spot. Because if we're going to build a resolution and we're going to put it in regulations, we need to, we need to, we need to find out which side of the road-
Well, I think number one item is, I think, I think decommissioning should be regulated.
Okay.
That's number one.
So you believe it needs to be regulated? Okay.
So what, number one?
So paragraph two of, of 26-110?
Right.
Paragraph two, decommissioning. He's proposing that it needs to be in the, in the-
Regulated and also require a bond or escrow or some type of surty to cover the decommissioning costs.
What about the road, what would you say about the road maintenance?
We haven't gotten, we're just, we just started with-
You just started with number two?
Yes, we did.
He asked me what item I wanted in the regulations versus decommissioning.
This is what he wanted in the, in the regulations.
So number two, you're, you think it should be in the regulations?
That's number one on the regulation, regulation list.
I follow you. I was just going in order.
Nope.
Yeah, yeah. We're not going one, two, three, four. I'm just hop, skipping around.
So maybe we ought to do-
He put me on the spot now. I've got to scan this thing real quick and tell you-
Maybe we ought to, maybe we ought to get a little bit organized here.
Yeah.
Do you believe a road maintenance plan needs to be in the regulations or in a resolution?
That could be in the, the development agreements.
Okay. So not, not even in a, not even in a resolution?
Well, the resolution, do, okay, yeah.
So we want it in the resolution where we're providing solutions?
Okay, I, I just want to make notes so I can make sure I'm-
Which is less of something that should, we feel should be considered in the development agreement.
So the way that Sedgwick County wrote theirs, they wrote it as a resolution amending an article. But, so did they, is theirs just a recommendation like what we're doing? Or is it a, is at the top of it, it says a resolution?
Publisher, resolution, resending.
It's their regulations. It has to be in a resolution form to adopt it. So everything we did with the private solar and those other text amendments, it was actually in a resolution. I actually have to publish a resolution to officially adopt those. They just did it this way. I do my, what I say by reference. So my resolution's a little bit smaller than that. But so anytime you amend the regulations, it's put into a resolution form. Yeah. So we just have it this way. We didn't find it in the actual zoning book, yeah.
Okay, and the, and how it's written in the draft, there is not a, there is not a bond written out?
No, there is no bond required. I would, I would prefer one in there, yes.
In the regulations?
Bond, escrow, some type of surty to cover the decommissioning costs.
Okay, the indemnification agreement, liability, basically liability insurance. Is that regulated or is that a resolution?
It seems pretty hard to me. It, I mean, hard regulation. You're going to have to provide this. This is not optional.
Yeah, I agree. I think it definitely needs one. I don't think that should be optional because, you know, how, what process is, you know, Joe Blow taxpayer or the adjacent landowner going to have to resolve any issues? You know, I mean, if, if, it's not saying what needs to be in that agreement necessarily, but there needs to be a, there needs to be a dispute and mitigation agreement.
Then the resolution would cover it and let the county commission determine what that is, what that is.
I could go along with that possibly.
The pilot, the pilot agreement, we don't need-
What's the dispute? Is it a resolution?
Dispute, that's a resolution.
Yeah.
Pilot, I don't want, I, I don't believe this, this, this commission needs to be in any payment and leave tax agreement stuff. That's, that's, that's between the county and the-
I agree. Just take that out.
The fire, fire safety and rescue plan, we were already talking about that in the, in the regulations. So I don't know why we have it in two places.
Let's back up and look at it. Let's back up and look at it. I think the only thing we've got there is possibly a battery storage.
Probably had it written or somewhere.
I don't see where we have that mentioned anywhere else. Yeah, it's not.
Okay. So.
All right. I'm standing, I stand corrected.
Well, the battery storage is addressed somewhere as the reference to.
Well, it doesn't reference anything about fire.
Fire code.
Code or anything on it, yeah. Yeah, the battery. Has to comply with the requirements of the Fire Protection Association for the battery storage, yeah.
Well, that, the, the key sentence for me right there is the plan should be, shall be reviewed by the emergency management director. So that needs to be a resolution and not a regulation. That's the key sentence for me. Because we don't, if, if we're going through and, and making, and making those rules, then why does he have a job? We aren't emergency, we aren't emergency, we aren't emergency management directors here. Let, let the guy that's a professional determine what needs to happen within the project.
You're not a fireman either, so.
Nope. So I believe that's a resolution unless, unless somebody can tell me different.
Well, I can go with resolution on that.
Our purchase agreement, I, that's none of our business either. I don't know if that's even the county's position, but we could put it in the resolution and let them hammer it out if they think it's a.
Hammer that out.
Yeah.
Be nice if it was used locally, but as we know, that doesn't always happen.
Damage reimbursement plan? I don't know that we need to be in that business either. That, that, that kind of falls under Don's, Don's playground. Who's gonna pay for, for damaging that blacktop road out there that gets, that? You're, you're gonna be feet-first in it. You're gonna know who the developer is. You're gonna go find out who's, who the, who the foreman is, and you're gonna follow the right trail.
The development agreement doesn't require them to reimburse the county for it. Then they do, except fix the road.
Put a resolution in and let the, let the county commissioners hash out.
It would be part of the development agreement.
Yep. Do the resolution there. Okay, groundwater monitoring plan, that's usually a hot topic.
Oh, yeah. I'm really not that hot on it any longer. You know, my own feeling anymore after all the research that's been done and information we've provided is the, you know, solar systems really don't necessarily contaminate groundwater. It's more of a runoff issue, in my opinion. And controlling, controlling that erosion and runoff than it is on groundwater.
Well, I think the planning commission is involved in land use regulations, not groundwater management. That's not our business.
Agreed, so a resolution.
Is it a resolution or is it eliminated?
You could probably eliminate it.
Yeah, I'd be okay with eliminating it.
Eliminate it from any kind of consideration.
Resolution, and then the county commission can eliminate it if they want to.
That's, then that's their prerogative.
Yes, let's do it that way.
And then number ten, to catch all any other documents relative.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be in regulation.
No, well, that's kind of what we're saying, though. I, I still have my developer hat on, and, I mean, that's, that's, that is what we're saying. If I'm considering a project in Reno County, and I don't know what you're expecting, well, whatever may be included, that's, that's what we'll get to.
Well, it's like a job description, and all, and all tasks as assigned by the manager. I could be digging ditches one day, and I could be, I could be the computer IT the next day. So you gotta look at it that way. These developers are not coming into this thing on their first day. So it's not like they're gonna, they're gonna be looking at that sentence and going, holy smokes, we're gonna be of a crit. Because they just said any documents relative to the request. They're gonna have, they're gonna be a little bit more savvy than, than, and they aren't naive by any means.
They're also, but it ain't gonna give you any more than you, than you asked for either.
I understand that. But where we, where we make this resolution, these, these items in our, in this that we, that we just identified as potential resolutions, that will give them a document to look at prior to the development agreement that they're gonna entertain. So it's gonna give them something to look at and say, okay, oh, shoot, yeah, I gotta, I gotta make sure that I got my road plan here. And, uh, yeah, I gotta make sure I've got it, I've got my, my mitigation agreement lined out. I'll get, get those guys all, get the lawyers lined up. My pilot program, if I have to, you know, this is all suggestions that they're gonna come to, and they, county commission may not want all ten of them. Well, it may depend on the. And they, they may need, they may need fifteen, but that'll be between them and the, that's, that's the discussion they'll have. There's, they'll, they'll at least have a running start. I'm gonna tell you, if I, you look at a, at a, at a job description, and it's gonna say, you will be setting at a desk six to eight hours a day. You're gonna be using office equipment, that you're going to be answering phones with customers. You're gonna be doing this. And then all items as, as assigned by manager. You'll know that just by design, most of those tasks assigned are gonna be related to the job task itself. So it's not gonna be completely out of bounds here. My example of, of digging, digging a trench to an IT person might be a little bit broad and be a little bit ambiguous, but my, my point is, is we're giving them a roadmap to be, to come to a development agreement conversation prepared and go from there. And that's my opinion anyhow.
So of the items on the twenty-six one-ten, basically in summary, I think we've got two of them that, at least I feel, should be pulled out and put in regulation. That would be the decommissioning and the indemnity agreement. The rest of it could go into a resolution.
Okay.
You know, as far as, you know, things for the commissioners to consider in the development agreement or whatever.
I don't mind the resolution concept, because it does, as a developer, that gives me information that I may, I may encounter this.
Yep.
I may not encounter.
Yep.
But when I look back at, at the rest of this document, it's full of the same kind of stuff that we could say, well, you know, we've got soil erosion, sediment control, stormwater runoff, special flood hazard areas, there's wildlife references. It's, it's full of this, in my mind, the same kind of regulation or resolution debate. So I'm having a hard time deciding, I mean, right, you know, right down to how, how tall the light pole could be.
I think, I think, I think things like stormwater runoff, erosion, and those are, I think, more important items in my mind, particularly with a solar project, because, or any environmental impact of a solar system. That's gonna be, to me, your biggest one, is your, is your runoff. Rain hits the panels, and it's gonna run, if I hit the ground, it's runoff panels. And you've got basically ground under it, yeah, but there, you've got a huge hardened surface that's collecting the rain, and it's gonna run down to the ground. If you don't have a adequate plan in place on how you're gonna handle that runoff and potential erosion, you know, then you're getting back to, okay, you know, we gotta protect the watershed, this type of stuff. This is how you do it, by having a, a plan in place to control this, this type of thing. You know, that's why I feel something like that should be regulated rather than just, it's something for the county commission to think about doing.
As I read the, the two samples from Cedric County and Douglas County, they did have a decommissioning piece of that in their, in their regulations. So I, I could. Pardon, I'm, I'm, I'm straddling the fence on whether that should be a regulation or whether that should be a piece, just a resolution that the county commission takes into, into account when they're doing the health agreement.
Pretty big item to just leave to happenstance. You know, I mean, if twenty-five years, if that's their saying, that's the life of these projects, and you've got all these pedestals that are mounted in cement and fences and everything else, you wanna make sure that at, at the conclusion of that project, when it's dead and gone and not generating any, any power any longer, that the ground can be and will be returned to its natural state. That's where, you know, a regulation comes in and says, yeah, you, you know, upfront, you're gonna have to plan to do this when the project's over. So it's something the developer needs to know, because that's a fairly substantial cost.
So, so I'd like to ask a question. So if you, I understand that the decommissioning should be maybe a regulation, but, but that has to happen. But in the regulation, don't you describe exactly how that happens, and how are you gonna do that? If it's not part of the development agreement at the time? So if you make it a regulation, are you gonna describe exactly how they decommission? I don't know how you do that.
I'm looking at Douglas County's right now. And I'm looking at Douglas County's right now. And they talk about, the plan shall include provisions for removal of all structures, foundations, et cetera. Subparagraph eight of that, that one says, all cables buried thirty-six inches or less underground must be removed. Hever than thirty-six inches may be remained. I mean, there, it's granular.
Yep.
So how granular, how granular?
What you tell you, what you need to do.
How granular do we want to get?
I mean, you know.
That, that's what I mean.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's bad.
There's also, there's also a paragraph here that, that, I'm not gonna read it all. It's on page, if you're looking at Douglas County, that's on the page one sixty-three. It's the paragraph five-four, right at the bottom of the page. And it just talks about the decommission, the reclamation plan must ensure the site will be reclaimed to useful, non-hazardous condition without delay.
I don't know what that means, but.
Well, it, well, it comes, it comes, I wasn't gonna read the whole thing, but it just says, with a minimum of ground disturbance, seeding of the land after the removal of equipment and revegetation of reclaimed, of reclaimed soil area, the crops are native seed, excluding any invasive species.
So.
That's a pretty, that, that to me is, I mean, it doesn't get granular, but that is all, that's also just a suggestion.
I mean, I think if, Steve, or, I think if you makes, I'm not against anything being a regulation or suggestion, but if you make something a regulation, make it pointed and make it a regulation. And if it's not that, then it's a suggestion, which is not a regulation.
No, it's fine with me.
Yeah, one of the two. That's, that's what I think you should do.
I agree. Yeah. I mean, you're gonna tell them what's expected of them, and we set it out in black and white, what we're expecting them to do on decommissioning. What, what they need to do in our minds to return that land to normal use.
I think we just have to be careful of what the job is of the land use and what the commissioners' jobs are to do, and, and not, not get in their business. And then we create what we think is a land use, and they make the final decision.
Yeah, but we're also trying to develop regulations so that, as I said before, the developers know what's expected of them going in.
So will the county commission get granular for a decommission agreement? They definitely better.
Yeah.
They, they should, you know.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, they have to.
Yes.
I mean, that's.
Well, our, yeah, I guess.
That's where the, that's where the negotiations are gonna happen, is between the developer and the commissioner and, and staff as well, is, okay, you know, you gotta do this.
If, if they don't get tough on that, then even your regulations, they're the one, it's not you guys that, that can enforce those regulations, it's them, not you. So if they're not gonna, if they're gonna enforce this, they need to have something really enforceable there. And if they're not gonna enforce anything, then I, I don't have an answer for it. But yeah, that's their job, you bet.
For them, but, you know, to me, I still think it should be a regulation, not just left, because that, that sets a standard for the industry in Reno County.
Exactly, I agree.
You know, whereas if you leave it in a development agreement, it could be a little different with each agreement.
I'm gonna switch hats now and be on, be on the planning commission. And for me to do my job and say, this is an appropriate land use, within that, that means there's a good decommissioning agreement. And if, if I'm subordinating that work to another group and they don't do it, that makes me look bad. I've just approved a, a land use, assuming that somebody else is going to kind of take care of the details for me. And I, I'm not sure I like that feeling. Because I don't know what the county commission is, how they're gonna behave twenty-five years from now. Why, why was this land used to even approve? There wasn't, there was no decommissioning requirement. I don't know, most land uses are based on what conditions you can have this building, or you can have this or have that. And you meet those regulations. It's not about how you tear down the building. I understand there needs to be a decommissioning. It's kind of a different animal here.
Yeah.
But I just don't know how, I mean, to say that there has to be a decommissioning, yes. But for you to create that, I, I don't, that's their job. They, they have to, they have to create that.
I think it's better for us to, to create the decommissioning requirements as a regulation. And, yeah, we'll get down to the nanosecond if you want to. But, you know, that's, that's what our job is, you know.
Sure.
I think for discussion, let's, let's, let's step back on this one. I think we've got a longer discussion here. And let's do some studying on what, on the two examples we had. Okay, both Douglas and Cedric County had decommissioning language in their, in their regulations. I think moving, I think to, I just wanna push, push pause on this subject right now. Maybe we can move forward on something else for, for the remainder of the evening. I was kind of, I thought maybe go to probably six-thirty-ish or so, and we can go have some supper. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna push this out of here fast, because we have good discussion either. But what I'm saying is, is maybe review those, maybe review those sections a little bit tighter for the, for December discussion. And maybe we put it, get put together a list. And maybe that would, maybe that would help us out in navigating the path forward on this. Because they've got some good, if you've read the, if you've read the two, two examples, they've got some, they've, they're both very, they're both varying in detail. Take what the, take, if we wanna take the best of both worlds and then put what we want on a document, let's discuss that, because we could, we could go, we could push this ball around the corner all day long. Well, we want a de-commissioning agreement. Well, let's, let's line it out. Let's see what we want in there, and then we can decide whether it belongs here or there. How does that sound? Does that sound fair?
Yep.
All right, we'll put that on the to-do list.
I just, I, it's your, it's your committee, and I'm just, I'm just. I'm just... Suggestions, but I'm just... And I'm all for whatever you want to make a regulation, but make it a regulation. Make it pointed. Make it clear.
Specific.
It has to be measurable.
And then it's fine.
Yep. Yep. I agree. No, I...
Does that mean you don't like Douglas County? Page 145, it says, "The intent of these regulations is to address major issues." That's not my word.
There's an awful lot of words in Douglas County.
There are.
A lot of words, yeah.
There's been a lot of, you know... I want to make something that fits Reno County. I don't want to take a cookie cutter from Douglas and stick it in our regulations and go, "Oh, my gosh, that's a mess." I don't want to do that. I want to use these, both of these examples as fodder, discussion material on how we want ours to look. Yep. And maybe we don't need to specify cables 36 inches or deeper can stay and 36 inches or shall or need to go. You know, maybe we don't need to. I don't know that. I'm just throwing that out. That's in one of the documents. So let's come back in December with a list of what we'd like to see, what we believe a decommission agreement should look like, and then we'll discuss those points.
So are we down to the development agreement, developer's agreement is in a resolution?
It's good... That's pretty much the way it looks. It's going to be...
26, 25, 110, except for the two items that we want to talk about regulating.
Which is decommission and...
Decommission and the insurance...
And demification agreement.
Yeah. And but the rest of that would then be put into a resolution that would be referenced in the regulations.
Following that mark as you're making notes.
Yeah, I'm going to... What I'll do is I will try and I'll cut out what we want to have in like the separate resolution and get that out of the regulations and move everything around. And then try and give this board here a separate document titled whatever for these other items, so you can see the two separately.
See how it looks.
And then I'll clean this document up. I've got some other things to discuss right quick with the board, what I want to do.
Okay.
And then I'll make those changes and then give you a clean copy of the proposal plus the proposed resolution, so that you can look at them separately like that instead of all pushed together. So you ready for my other little...
I'm ready.
Everybody? So going through the document, there's some things that we need to cut out on the first page, under 26, 101. Number two talks about guidelines for a private solar system, or subject to article 26, 113. Well, that's not true anymore because we've moved private solar to article 13, or no, article 15 in the zoning regulations. And so really, that I think should come out of this document right here, because private solar is under a different article right now.
Did we leave it in there originally because we wanted a reference? So if somebody was looking at solar energy, they could say, "Ah, this is commercial."
Yes.
Or, "Private, I need to go to another place."
I think there's a lot of...
No, because remember, it was all... I thought it was back in the day when we had commercial, limited scale, and private was a... Private was an add-on at the end. That's what 25, 113 was. And then we took it out.
Well, don't we have in 26, 102, number two? Doesn't it tell whoever's reading this document that a private solar energy system is pointed somewhere else?
So see, article 25.
So we probably need to change that article.
Or just change...
Yeah, change that reference.
Reference to...
But then we can just get rid of number two in 26, 102.
I'd go with that. I'd say just get rid of it.
Yeah.
It's under accessory uses right now in article 15.
Well, in 102, 26, 102, item two, we have that same reference, Mark, at the very last of that. It says, "See article 25-113."
We need to reference that, the right accessory use.
Where is it? 26, 102.
Number two.
That was my next comment, yeah.
You're jumping ahead of me here.
Yeah, get rid of two in 26, 101. And then change this reference down here to the correct reference, article 13 or whatever it is, that we have controlling, you know, private solar.
So you want to leave it in there and just reference article 15?
Get rid of it up there in 26, 101, item two, get rid of that, and then change the reference in 26, 102 to whatever the proper reference is.
Because it's already saying it's permitted as an accessory use in all zoning districts. See article 15.
Whatever it is. That way, it references it for somebody reading it, thinking, "Oh, well, I'm going to look at that if I'm looking at private solar."
Hold on, 103, so...
That was the second thing that I had, was to eliminate that. I will make that change then and leave it in.
Can I ask a question on this same page?
Yeah.
This may create some job security for us, depending on what we think. Under the solar energy system definition, we've got the word thermal in there. And if you look at Douglas County, they flesh that out to a concentrating solar thermal device, which is a whole different...
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's using mirrors that are focused on steam generation and...
They tried to do that in the desert, didn't they? Put a bunch of mirrors up and concentrate them at a center point.
Yeah, it is working. So I don't know if we want to amend our definition and just exclude this whole thermal concept, or try to address... I mean, when I think about that kind of an installation, there's a lot of other things that come into play, as opposed to just solar panels.
Yeah, we can amend that to exclude...
So part of it is just to stick with the solar panel farm.
Or just strike out ore thermal. And then just it says that... So, "Equipment and subsystems required to convert energy from sun into electricity or electric energy." And just strike ore thermal.
You just want to strike it then? Will that do what you were wanting?
Well, that would be a start, yeah.
Well, that's where we're at. We're still at the start right now, you know. We're not at the final.
Is there a door now for a developer to come in and wanting to develop a thermal energy system?
We don't have any regs for it.
Exactly.
I mean, I don't know what technology is going to bring, but I don't feel like our regs address that piece of the industry. We've been thinking solar panels.
I'm totally unfamiliar with thermal energy systems, so I don't know. I know absolutely nothing about them and how prevalent they are or anything else, you know. So like, somebody would want to develop one in Kansas.
They were the original solar panels on top of houses, because they were used for additional heat for a house in the wintertime. That was the original use. They were all over in the 70s. Guys were selling snake oil and said, "If you don't have one, you're crazy," all that sort of stuff. And they usually saw a few of them, and they either had...
Some have been removed.
I think they, yeah.
Yep. They either had antifreeze in them or water or something to that effect.
Circuits, kind of passive.
It was a passive, yep. Yep. That's...
I had a neighbor, actually, that had one. He had a big black tank.
And I think they had one or two, like industrial-scale ones, like Gar's talking about, out in the Mojave Desert. But I don't think they've built any of those 30 or 40 years.
Right. So scratch... I think you're spot on. We probably need to look at that potentially in the future as a separate document.
Is there anybody building a solar thermal plant?
And that might be one.
No, except on an experimental basis.
Okay.
EPRI built some. Even had the steam generator way up.
I was going to say, don't they have like a big giant column that they all focused, big circle?
Generated steam, the front of steam turbine, but it was just a...
Scratch it.
It was just a...
Scratch it, yeah. So scratching is good for you, that ore thermal?
It was never commercially viable.
All right. Mark, go ahead.
26, 106, number three, it's on page 25, four, right above, 26, 107. It talks about a secondary map project drawn at a scale not greater than 1,600. Is that still important? I was probably further thought and stuff. I don't know if we need a secondary map showing every single solar panel.
Do you ever require a primary map somewhere?
Yeah.
Where's that at?
That I did not...
It's at the beginning of 26, 106.
Yeah, number one.
There you go.
Project next.
This is a carryover from the wind, where we had secondary maps showing each...
Okay, build a structure or all this kind of...
I could see it go. That's my opinion.
Because all you're going to have is a bigger map of potentially like each parcel showing...
Putting a magnifying glass on the map to...
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Scratch.
I say that was a carryover from the wind. Next page, 26, 107, number four, where it says, "The report shall be conducted by a qualified third party." I thought I changed the word "conducted" to "prepared." I don't know why. And then down the bottom of that page, number six, starting with the second line, where it's talking about the solar glare hazard analysis. I don't know if that's... I mean, you know, these panels aren't... I don't know. I've never seen the report. I don't know what it entails. I don't know why is it needed? Because I say panels are designed to absorb, not reflect, and so a lot of the other regulations have it.
That may be something...
That's on aviation.
And one of the... Everything's swimming together. And in one of the examples, they mentioned if it was going to be within a flight line of an airport, that the FAA was involved in their glare studies and all that. So that could go away, because in paragraph five right above it, we're talking about FAA regulations. I think we could just strike that and move on. Strike number six and move on.
Well, I think you can leave the first sentence, "Shall be designed to minimize..."
I'll buy that. Yep. But the hazard analysis doesn't need to be there.
So that would be the rest of that.
The pilot, Don, do you have any comment?
Well, they have them on airport.
Oh, you fly into Atlanta and they're all over the region.
And then right below that, letter A, where it says, "If glares predicted, the applicant shall describe the type of mitigation." If we're not going to require an analysis, we're not going to know how much glare, so then do we need to have... Number nine is in there where this is what we're talking about, visual impact assessment and simulated photographs. They'll... A company will often provide, you know, counties, what the farm will look like from certain vantage points, whether it's the intersection of a road or somebody's property. They'll show you what you can expect to see once it's fully built out. Is that something the board would still be interested in seeing?
They would, yeah.
I think on a large project, that might not be a bad thing.
Okay.
Not so much concerned with like with Ark Valley, showing the line drawings that you provided.
Right.
Plenty adequate. I think the rest of it probably wouldn't be a bad plan.
Well, that gets to... I don't know if we're going to talk after we get through this, but the maximum size...
I was going to bring that up too.
It's in the other two counties, and, you know, some of these things are important to, you know, 400-acre install versus a 4,000-acre install. It's just different. So I agree.
Let's get through Mark's red lines, and then we'll... I bet that as a point of discussion.
Page 25, seven, under height, number three. And then letter A, this kind of came up, I think during the public hearing, where we didn't maybe clarify what we mean by height. I mean, I think it's assumed that we mean went vertical to the ground, so I thought I would just add that since we're now going back to this. We'll just add, you know, the solar panel to the highest point of the solar panel, went vertical.
Vertical point of the solar panel.
So I just could add... So that way, that just kind of clarifies that even more instead of under the assumption.
Can you say where you're at again? I was writing...
I'm sorry. Page 25, seven.
Okay.
Under height, 3A. At the end, I just want to clarify what we mean by highest point of the solar panel. I'd say like went vertical to the ground. I think under page 25, eight, then number four, the fencing. I don't believe this made it to the limited scale where we talked about the earth and berm. So we're going to strike that whole paragraph where you could build a berm. There was initial thought about doing something like that, providing some setback, you know, brakes, but I think in the end, we eliminated that from the limited scale, so just carry that over. You got to remember, this is back in 2023, and then we pivoted and took 2024 and modified this. And so that included...
So we just want to stick to only a fence for our boundaries?
Yeah. The earth and berms.
Where are they going to get the dirt? That would be a question.
It's great to go out of the topsoil.
That goes in the developer's agreement.
Where they get the dirt.
Then, under the lighting, letter A, light poles over 20 feet. I don't know if they're going to have lights. I'm proposing that, I mean, just say just no lights except as required by federal or state regulations.
Because my yard light's over 20 feet tall.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't imagine it being regulated on how tall mine is.
Note that. Yes. The same thing with...
Also has a flag on it, so does that matter?
It's a flagpole, it's a flagpole without a light. It just changes classification.
And then letter C would be eliminated to dusted on lighting. We put it in there, you know, if they're going to make repairs and during the construction phase, they can have lights, you know, on there, but...
So what are you proposing to leave in the section on lighting? Anything?
B and D, any lighting required, B, federal or state regulations.
Okay. And any security lighting? Okay. All right. I think my yard lights are over 20 feet up too.
I know, and I'm changing... I was changing the eyeball on it. I have somebody else come out and do that.
Exactly, yeah.
My 20-foot extension ladder was not stable enough.
I wouldn't get up there on a 20-foot extension ladder anyway.
Under signs on page 25, nine, number seven, letter A, talking about warning signs, I think. Get it a little bit more specific, like we just say that warning signs are required as per federal and state regulations. Just leave it at that and just eliminate the rest of that, talking about emergency contact information, because the federal or state regulation would have that as a requirement anyway. So just trying to eliminate, I don't know if they do, but it should be if it's a federal regulation, we're not going to regulate it, then that's the way it is. it, then that's the way it is.
Federal regulations. All right. I mean, are there federal regulations regarding signage on solar?
Well, they're probably a hundred pages long.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
If they are, I haven't seen them, but.
Yeah, there, we, we went through signage, there was, there was signage, were, uh, verbiage that we went through, whether we wanted to require a, a physical address for every tower and all that fun stuff, so, yeah, there's.
That's all I have, then I think, everything else is just like.
Just as you were discussed?
Nothing, nothing like with concepts.
Okay. Okay, Don, you hinted us a map earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, I got it.
Tell us about what you got there?
Oh, what I did is, that, when prohibited, uh, solar within the, and then it's called watershed, around Cheney Lake there, I said that I would, it, we was gonna make it per map, like, because, you know, and not survey this and stuff. And so what I did there is I made it within the nearest quarter section. And so you can see there were, in the zoned area of the county, I'm just on the outside of that, so that I can encompass all of the floodplain, and then on the opposite side.
Watershed.
Huh?
Watershed, not floodplain.
Watershed, I'm sorry. So I could encompass all the watershed within the zoned area. But then, on the other side, it's, uh, some of that is within the zoned area, because you, we have, you have no jurisdiction in the unzoned part of the county, so that's why those quarter sections are not anywhere outside of that zoned area, and why they had to be just within, within a quarter sections, cause you can't prohibit anything outside of the zoned area.
So the lines you have in the unzoned area, basically marks the, where the dividing line is between zoned and unzoned?
That circle is the unzoned.
Okay.
It's all the line, and the jagged lines are within the nearest quarter section, within the zoned area.
Within the zoned area.
Yes, because you, I can't go outside of the zoned area.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
But in the zoned area, I can go outside of the, uh, the watershed and prohibit just a little bit outside of that.
So your, your red line is gonna replace that curved blue line, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
As, as a border for the zone, between the zone and unzoned eventually?
As far as prohibiting.
For the prohibition on.
For the watershed. For the watershed.
I got you, uh, now I understand.
Can't go outside of the zoned area for the watershed, because you don't have jurisdiction outside of the zoned area.
I'm tracking, I'm tracking completely now. I thought maybe you were making, you had talked about making those lines straight for the zoning, for the zoning borders.
I think these circles are crazy, and a nightmare if a development, everyone to go in there and figure that out. I think that it should be squared, squared up and figured out, which takes a public hearing and all that, but I think that's something that should be considered in the future.
Right, maybe, maybe that's on the to-do list as, as we talk about other things.
It, it, it should, yeah, cause these circles, I mean, I don't, I don't know, this was done in the sixties, so I don't know why they did it.
Okay, nope, I understand what you're talking about.
Somebody took a couple of them.
That's what they did.
Yeah. They went miles, there it is.
They went to the edge of the lake and made a circle.
Yep.
Yep, you got it.
How'd you like to be the person to figure out where that circle is actually?
Well, if I was a surveyor, I'd love it.
That would be job security for a long time.
Is that high tide or low tide?
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Okay, all right, so, thank you, Don, appreciate that clarity. For some reason, and I had in my notes that we were gonna discuss, I think along with this, the prohibition, we did, we decide as a board, the, the, in the zoned area to prohibit. Okay, so we're done. Oh, that's, that's right, because that's, that's what this.
Prohibited last month, we're just, the map is just for like your information purposes, you already made that determination.
We've adopted, you adopted this map at the last meeting, even though you didn't have it.
Yeah, you recommended prohibition, we're just providing you the map to kinda.
And we gave you the liberty to build the map, that's right.
Okay.
Quarter section.
Okay. So I believe we have our homework to review this document on, on content, uh, primarily look at the decommissioning piece, let's put, all put a list together of what we believe should be there, so we can determine, okay, yes, no, maybe, and we can make it, we can make it, we can move forward on that piece.
Other thoughts on other aspects of the regulations? Garth had brought up one, and I was gonna bring it up myself. Go ahead, Garth.
Uh, well, one is the, any cap on size, which we do not have. I don't have a number in mind, but it, at some point, it makes sense to me. I don't think we have the, and this would probably be in the developer's agreement, that the no landfill disposal of damaged panels, and I heard that in the public hearing and, uh.
That was in one of these other county regulations.
Yeah, and, and it's a, I think it's a, it's a real issue. Depending on size, I think the wildlife connectivity could be an issue.
Quarters, yes.
And depending on the tract of land, so that could be a developer's agreement option, you know, if you have a, a smaller, flat piece of ground like this, limited scale, it's not an issue, but, um, it, it could be. Anyways, on my, my thought list, uh, one of them had a, um, a fee for construction inspection, and, you know, while the construction jobs I've lived through, consistent inspections solve a lot of problems and, uh, save a lot of conflict. You know, when you can catch something early on and say that doesn't look right, um, I don't know, I don't know where that would go, but, uh, I made a note of it, and, and a fee to go with that.
Typically, that'd be a third party person that the county would hire, the developer would pay for, to make sure that the project is being developed according to the regulations. There was something we were gonna do with wind, and it was in place for, for wind, if, you know, a project is part of our regulations, then, that we would hire somebody to verify that everything meets setbacks.
So that would be another, uh, develop on agreement?
Could be, or, yeah, it could be, could be there, or, you know, it, it is in the regulations, but it could go either way, but it's now, is, yeah, is that necessary for a solar, it could be.
And I think this came up earlier, uh, requiring a bond on the, the decommission, and the, you know, the gentleman that spoke, on the Ark Valley, limited scale, had that question too, if the, if the bond exists, and, I mean, certainly there's abandoned projects in too many places that for one reason or another wind up to be a public nuisance, and the county or the city winds up being on the hook to clean it up, so, uh, I, I would like to see that somewhere, again, maybe develop.
I see that as a regulation, only the county commissioners determine.
Part of the decommissioning agreement, I think, or, you know, in the regulations that I was talking about, that's why I was thinking about that too, but, you know, put that in as part of the regulation on the decommissioning.
Okay.
Requiring a certain bond or escrow.
And my last one is groundwater testing, I know we've chased that around before, um. I, I'm kinda like Steve, it doesn't seem to be an issue, but, um, it's just helpful to have a baseline for everybody, uh, if a question comes up later, whether solar caused it or something else, so you at least know where everybody started, so. I, I'm, I don't feel strongly either way, uh, but again, something I learned was, you do that, when you buy a property, you do it so you can prove what's not there, because, uh, you know, if something shows up later, you have something to say, well, we didn't do this, this came from somewhere else, so.
So how about soil, you know, too? That's on water, what do you think, uh, would you think so on, on the soil test, like the, say the top level?
So would you do, uh, in that ca, in these cases, soil and water, would you do a baseline when it was built? And then, and then do a, uh, at, at decommissioning and see what the difference was, is that kinda what you're thinking?
That's what, one of the.
Not in between.
I think one of them required like every five years.
Yeah, it did, but.
Five times over a twenty-five year project.
Yeah, then they have to submit it, and I remember Mark was saying he didn't really wanna, did, be liable for keeping track of those and, and, uh, where would we put them so people could see them?
We would do environmental sections with the county. Environmental services, there you go.
But if you did one at the beginning and, or sure one at the end, then you would know where they were, I mean, if, could, could you just store it with the plans that, that the county makes and kinda that file, or how would you do that?
I don't know, how would that be stored? Part of, would that be part of the, the development plan that would be stored at the county commission level?
Oh, it'd probably be stored in environmental, but, so, so I asked a que, I'm not saying that you shouldn't do that, so if you take a, a big water test or ground test, and however many years later, you, you take another one and there's something there, how do you prove where it come from? How do you prove it come from the solar?
Well, we can't.
Ways to do that.
Well, we can't, because we're zoning regulations, we're not soil scientists or water regulators.
You're just taking a snapshot.
Grain elevators and groundwater contamination, it came from those years, years later, they traced it back to grain elevators because of the groundwater, you know.
Right, but that wasn't planning and zoning.
No, no.
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's an appropriate job for planning and zoning, I think Mark's very capable, but I don't think that's his job.
Where does that go in, in the thought of, cause it's a big, it's an important thing that needs to be kinda considered?
Well, I would think like with the carbon ted and grain elevators, it's a KDHE or EPA issue. I don't, I don't, I think that's outside the purview of this board.
I agree, yeah.
It's like, you know, KD, KD, they're, they're over the, the naval base thing, all that, that's, that, yeah, that's what I mean, and how you prove where something came, I, I don't know how, I don't know how, I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, I just don't know what that means as far as solar panels, I, I don't know, I, but I do understand.
Well, for me, there's a, an element of public, maybe not public safety, but it could be, uh, public concern, uh, that, you know, that we would, our regulations care enough about your concern, that we're gonna have some information, uh, that, that we know when it was obtained and what was there at the time.
Cause right, right now, we have, we have wells that don't have nitrate in them, five years ago, that now have nitrate, nobody knows exactly where it's coming from. So, I mean, it does tell you something wasn't there, now it is, but then I don't know what that means from that point, unless you can detect it exactly to a panel, I don't, I don't know. And I'm not saying that it shouldn't be.
Oh, but, you know, studying the solar thing over the past months, years, whatever, you know, this has been a big issue as far as, you know, groundwater contamination or soil contamination from runoff of the panels, and, you know, everything I've seen, it's, you know, there's been no real science to back that up, you know, they're saying that the, the main issue is just more runoff and erosion control than it is, you know, contamination.
For a, a multi-thousand acre install, it could be pesticide or herbicide concentration.
Yeah, or they can get sheep to graze the land.
Yeah.
All good points.
Well, and if you're covering thousands of acres, where's that test gonna be?
Multiple tests.
They did, they did say.
Couple miles by a couple miles.
Or twenty by twenty graph, I think, of the area or something, there was, they had it measured out, didn't they, in one of the, one of the plans of where it would be taken, and I guess if you got to that point, if, if you took a, that specific, you would have to have like a specialist come do that, that marks it by GPS, because otherwise it wouldn't be in the same spot. That would be the only way you could guarantee that it was.
Be within the same, same three, three foot square every time.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they also, and I think we're probably looking, thinking referencing the same example here, they also talked about, uh, wells, uh, private wells within the project area.
Yes.
Within a quarter of a mile.
Yes.
So, something to think about.
Another thing I was wondering on the, on the fencing, uh, I don't know what part we would put it in on what we're discussing on the agreement or regulation, but, um, if you have an eight foot tall chain link fence, and it goes to the ground, like the developer was saying how there would be wildlife in the area, uh, that, say the REA companies, there, they said that there would be wildlife in the area, and it had increased like bobcats and foxes, but I don't really see a bobcat or a fox really getting through a chain link fence unless they were to dig, you know, over the years, there's probably gonna be, but it's gonna be a while before that, that, if it's a big area, that that's gonna have a wildlife path through there. Um, do, do we wanna consider a distance from the ground, or some, some form of making it possible for wildlife to penetrate the fence? A deer wouldn't.
The bigger projects, I think they provide for wildlife corridors, openings, you know, basically fenced in openings that allow wildlife to, if you have like two sections of ground.
You have to make a split or something between them.
Places where there's, there's openings in the fence that allow the wildlife to go through and flow through. You know, in some places, I know what you're talking about, they say, well, they would, you know, like a barbed wire fence or something, they'll put like round wire on the, on the lower rung or something, so that small animals can get through there and not get, but, you know, we're talking chain link fence, not hot wire, and it's, to me, it's ineffective to try to put a chain link fence a foot off the ground, you know, if you're trying to keep people out, that's just giving them a way to get in.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we might as well change it to a barbed wire fence.
It's hard to just, you know.
Very square.
Put hot wire around it and call it good, you know.
I think we discussed fencing, Mark, when we, when we did the limited scale, but I think it pertained to floodplains and how we thought that, you know, how it would be a barrier.
Right.
In a, in a water flow situation.
Uh-huh.
And I'm not thinking I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, I think you're correct, on that we did.
Any other suggestions?
I've got those, and I think I've got some good notes, I hope I can produce, reproduce the next draft.
We're gonna be reading the minutes, we're gonna be dissecting it every, every punctuation.
I will, I'll do my best here.
It's been several months, I think you all need to take it and read every single one of them, and be prepared to make a change if you don't agree with it, now things have changed.
Yep, things have changed.
I have one thing, if, if this is a good time.
This is a good time.
Um, the other document that you have at your desk was Article fifteen, uh, which involved the two minor text amendments, and also the other, uh, text amendments regarding private solar, so I just copied the whole entire article, um, for the board, rather than try and piecemeal. rather than try and piecemeal a certain page that you need to replace. And so that's what that is, so pull out your old Article fifteen, your copy, and replace it with that one. And if you want, I can two-hole, three-hole punch it or do whatever you need. I just provided that copy. You let me know if you need it. So that's what that, that is, so private solar is done, it's published, it's on the books along with the other two amendments, so we're good. So that's what happened between last meeting and today.
Fair enough.
That's all I have.
Is there any other business that needs to be brought before this board?
Do we have any timelines? But we're just on our own now.
There's a more quorum on this that ends on December first, but, uh, at the next county commission meeting, it'll be on there and I recommend that you go till March. And then if we need to extend it, we will. If we need to shorten it, we'll do it.
Good timeline.
No.
Seeing no other business, chair will understand the motion.
So moved.
Back to.